The time is 6:32. We're going to call this meeting to order. Everyone would stand for confirmation.
Our heavenly Father, we've come to you to give, to lead us in all of our decisions and our steps in this meeting today. We're a group that want to do for our community the best that we can do for your will and your will allow. We ask you to lead us, God, and to always be in our heart, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
My religion's to the flag of the United States of America. A true republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I guess we start with real talk, Allison.
Um, Allison, servant.
Pam Reed.
Elizabeth Alford.
Kathy O'Neill.
Larry Perry.
Okay, and we have some announcements. I went ahead and put some of these down on here so I wouldn't forget everything. First of all, the school board election. Early voting was today and tomorrow at the administrative building. And the regular is on May 6th in the county chamber. And we're begging everyone to please vote for that so that we can protect our students and we can give some building things done. It won't change the amount you pay if you vote for it. It won't change the amount you pay if you vote against. But it will allow the school to buy a bond to take care of these kids. So highly encourage everybody to get out and vote.
I was number 136.
Very good.
136.
Then we have the farmer's market on May 13th. And the Quinnland fireworks on June 30th. And the Travers Jam Fest on July the 1st.
There he is.
Any other announcements that anyone has? Bill, great.
How y'all doing?
Good.
All right, Bill.
Okay, so we don't have any other announcements. Do we have any citizens input related to our agenda?
Input?
Well, I actually got you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm on there.
You are there, I'm there.
Yeah, it's very.
You actually are there. Okay. So we'll go on. We don't have any? Bill, do you have any comments that you want to make?
No.
Okay. All right. Then we're going to go on to our consent agenda. Approval of minutes from April the 3rd. Approval of our bills paid and those to be paid. Profit and loss statement, our financial report, and then our bank statement. Everybody just had a chance to look over those.
Are we still in the red?
We have money, but we are still hanging in there with.
Still floundering with it?
Yeah.
We don't have as much as I'd like to have, but we've got enough to do.
What we have to do is still enough to fulfill what we've got in common.
So we've paid the QISD and MTOI and gone to the department.
I'll make a motion on the first one until Friday minute to make a vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion that first bill's paid and most to be paid.
Second motion.
All in favor? Okay, our profit and loss statement.
I'll make a motion. Prove our financial report, profit and loss statement.
Okay.
Loss statement.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then finally, our bank statement.
She was 200, 240 million.
I wish. Or I wish. That would be great. We did.
We could make miracles happen.
Now, pray God, it's way lower bad. But it's not bad because we still have enough to do.
Can you tell me what that, 2964, on page three, the last one?
Uh, 2964.
64.
Yes.
We had to pay back the general fund for the training that we had acquired for the, that we used their credit card, oh, to pay for our sales tax workshops. And so that, that check is to pay back the general fund for the credit card use for those trainings that we, are mandatory that we get. And I think most of you have signed up for that, which is good.
I don't think she has, God.
She's got your list, Mrs. Woman. And it shows up on, I checked the Texas EDC memberships. Your membership shows up. Mary's membership shows up. Elizabeth's membership shows up. Kathy's and mine show up. And Harry's shows up. But I don't see change yet.
Sir. Make a motion to accept our thing statement for, is it March, February?
Accept that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And if you don't mind, I would love to entertain a motion that we do our new business first so that we can go ahead and talk about Travers thing before we get into our old business.
Sounds good.
I just need a motion. Make a motion with this to hear the new business before the old business.
I second that motion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Always check for that.
I can be quiet. Well, I came for the council members meeting last month and they unanimously agreed to let us come back this year. And I'm giving you some, I'm just letting, giving you guys, thanks honey, I was going to ask you for a sponsorship for this. Heard the word floundering and, well, maybe I shouldn't. And Teresa apologizes for not being there. She's at the hospital with her dad for a while, so I think we'll be all right. But then, so this will be more informational for you guys. And you'll see the first pages are on flyer, saving the date. I'm not going to have enough money for fireworks, but I think this will still be a great show. And let me see our sponsorship levels and what our vendors look like. I think we're all, we have about five truck vendors already and they're really good. They're off the chart. You guys will be really happy. And we've sold a lot of the vendor spots. So I'm very excited about all that. I am going to try to sell alcohol this year, so I'm still waiting for a letter from the mayor. And I think that it's ready. He just needs to sign it and then I can get the application. But you'll see on here, when you guys come, we're going to try to fill her up and have a really big day for you guys. We'll rope off all the beer sales and we've got it down there by the van. So we'll have that all roped off. And we'll send it off to T-bar, T-post or some sort of fencing material. But we want to allow people to come in and out with no alcohol in their hands, you know, per TADC laws. So we'll have, everybody will have a bracelet and there won't be alcohol minors to the kids. And we've got some pretty good vendors. I think you guys will be happy. You'll see the little big blue thing. That'll be the bouncy houses and the water slide for the little kids. If anybody wants to volunteer that day, you can park up hours. We've got spots. I think we're still working on someone helping us with the parking. And other than that, I think it'll be a great day. I know people keep coming to me about the fireworks, but you know, 10,000 is 10,000 and that's just the way it is. And at this point, I think it's going to be real tough to have somebody come out. But I think if they just open their eyes, they'll see all the fireworks around the park and they have a really nice front view. Right?
I agree.
Yeah.
They probably do their own fireworks at the water, too. Is that possible?
It's against, it's in the city limits. So it's in my knowledge that that is against the laws.
Even at the water?
Well, that would be something between the city and themselves to, we're not going to ask for it.
I will tell you that it is against the city ordinance. And I will tell you that there are several people that do that around the lake, even though it is against the city ordinance. But I don't know how strongly our police department will enforce that, so I'm not encouraging it.
No, I wouldn't encourage it, but you know, they will for as long as they can get away with it. And my neighbor that does it, too. He goes for a fight, all of a sudden, oh, here's cops. Come in and come out. It's like somebody told them. I don't know. It's fine until it hits your house.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's the only reason I sit outside and watch it is just, yeah. Anyway, so it's going to be lots of fun. If you have any questions or if you have any suggestions for us, guys?
I just have one question on the vendors. I know that you are charging the fee for that. Do you also make sure that they are charging the sales tax that would come back to the city?
I can do that because I think that's important. Being an EDC, EDC director myself, I think that's important. If you would like for me to do that, I'd be, I'd appreciate that very much. And I anticipate them making quite a bit of money. So last year, we, I think we only had three. That was in Mexico. But they had lines all night long. So let me make sure that happens for you and including the vendors. I'll have to look into other cities and how they enforce that. I may have to just get hard on them.
Did we contribute to this last year?
We did.
Do you remember what we contributed last year? Do you know what we went through?
We did those 2,500.
Yeah, we did. 2,500 last year.
But if you have any more questions, I just wanted to bring it to your attention and make sure you go and draw.
We played for the fireworks last time.
We took a loss on them.
Took a loss on them.
Yeah, but we had it. Just to get quite enough sponsorships.
I watched it last year.
I did, too. And now, Hardy was pretty good.
It was, it was very long, very wonderful, very beautiful it was.
I wish I could have been on the boats out there watching. It looked like they had a lot of other.
Miracle happens and we happen to get it. We will be asking for the point to be blocked off so nobody can go out there so they can have their fireworks. Now, I understand that the fireworks were still hot in the morning, so make sure that's not going to happen again. And we got another trash receptacle, so I understand that we'll have a little more better trash. And we will have our porta potties that we've already bought them. Yeah.
Hopefully, our back friends will be working on it. So you might want to put the porta potties on the opposite side.
We'll make them a little more spread out for the traffic. Probably one down towards the own stage and.
Yeah, it's better than that. So we have the money to, to.
So we can go to the executive session and discuss that many of you.
I would like this to be done.
So shall we? Do you want to do announcements?
There's only three of us.
We're three. One is, how many?
Nice.
Sorry. Okay, returning from executive reception at 6:53.
At this time I'd like to make a motion that we become a Stars and Stripes sponsor for $5,000.
What? That is such a blessing, thank you. We'll do everything we can to get some fireworks in there. Well, that chills.
All in favor?
I am too, and if we make anything over, we're set to save it until next year so we can keep compounding to build it better. We'd like to keep it right here.
This is something that we really enjoy for our community and really feel like it's a good wholesome, you know, place for us to use the park and so that's the reason we want to.
I think you get a banner with that, if I'm not mistaken.
Seems like you get a lot of stuff.
Get lots of stuff and you know, in other places I've worked, the EDC doesn't always say sponsored by the EDC. It would be sponsored by EDC and like, it's a place for like logos for like all your businesses. Just something like that. Let us know what you want on it. We really appreciate it.
I'll probably get back with you on that. I may want to list some of our.
Yeah, absolutely. That's amazing, thank you.
Here's James.
So sorry.
We think we got caught. Okay, so.
Do you still want to stay in the business?
Actually. We can go ahead and, we can go ahead and go to old business then.
You need to make sure to go back to old business.
So we need a motion to go back to old business.
Make a motion to go back to the old business.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Alright, so let's review our meet and greet.
I just want to say, I'm so sorry I didn't get to make it.
We wish, missed you.
I was so sad, really. By the time I got off work and got home, and then I had a headache, it was so bad, it was already six something. And I was like, it's just over.
We enjoyed your sandwich.
We enjoyed your sandwich.
Are you sure?
We did. And I want to know how you got it back in the bread loaf.
My mama taught me that trick.
That was cool.
Just make your sandwich, cut it, and then roll the bag, put it back in there, and roll it back up as you go.
Wow, it was incredible. We loved that.
Loaf, we should do that.
That was great.
I, I think it went very well. I really enjoyed it. And then my brother thought it was very well put on, very well laid out, and that everybody spoke to each other. He thought that was very good communication. All because of him over there.
So what would you say was the best thing about the meet and greet?
I'd say making it to business people and listening to what they had said.
Giving everybody an opportunity to speak, I thought was very advantageous. That was very nice.
What negative did you see with the meet and greet?
Wish more of them had been there.
How many did turn out?
Would have liked, would have liked the whole town there.
We would love that. But we, we did have probably about six businesses there.
That's not bad. We got our six that I was looking for.
Yeah, exactly.
I think one of the positives was that, you know, they know that we're interested, you know? City is interested in reaching out to them. I think that's an important thing, you know, probably it never happened, you know, recently.
Right, right. I, I think it's a good thing that we're making contact with them. I think that's really important.
Yeah, I think we should do it quarterly.
Quarterly, okay. I was gonna say twice a year, but quarterly is very advantageous, you know, to be able to. So.
Were the pamphlets okay?
The pamphlets were great. Great, really appreciated the pamphlets.
They were those in last minute, so I was like, I'm not sure if it had all the.
It was really good. I, I passed those pamphlets out like crazy, and I think they were really, you know, good. And I'd like to use those when we go meet with some of these businesses.
Right. Well, I actually was planning on just going and mass producing how much of them, if they were okay, and just having them for us to give out for information.
I like that idea a lot. We want, really want, yeah, one with you so we can look them through, the people that are here. You didn't see it? I don't think we even have one here.
Make sure you get the Chiber some to show.
Yes, yes.
That's our plan. Yeah.
I filled in all of them.
I've got all that from the meet and greet. The only thing that I saw that was a little bit negative was that even though we had been announcing it in every meeting that we went to, that we were going to do this, I still had businesses that said to me, I wish I'd known about this sooner.
Yeah, I saw that a couple.
And that had to do with the flyer that we put out. We didn't put that flyer out until just a couple of days before. So I see that probably what we need to do with that is we need to plan on putting our flyer out a little bit sooner and then making re-contact with our businesses.
I would say at least a month and a half, that way you get from the time people, even if they're just here on the weekends, they'd still get one out to meet us, you know?
Eye to eye invitations are always, always the best run, you know? You put your pamphlets, you do your thing, but if you can get out, separate, and eye to eye communication, I think is very important.
Yeah, that's a cool way to put, um, a flyer or a notice in with the water bill that goes out to everybody in the community when we're gonna do something, such as a meeting.
But the water bill comes on just the postcard?
There, there's a note spot on there, but it's a matter of, this is city, this is EDC, and sometimes getting approval. Now, if we had a stamp for, that had could change dates on, this would count for maybe EDC maybe, just.
That'd be nice.
No, they get, they run through, print it. The way they work, and they have to be pretty done. They have to, uh, it's a thought. Yes, it's a thought, and we couldn't look at that. Yeah, we could. Of course, the cost of sending it is the issue. Is the issue here. You know, we, we like to use our money for things like the Jam Fest and helping businesses and things like that. More than we do like to spend a dollar on people coming to our meeting. Well, we need that too, but, yeah. But I hate to put it on paper goods when we can do something else.
Just talk about that another day.
Yeah.
Well, I enjoyed the meet and greet. I didn't, in hearing everybody speak, including John Musson.
I'm not really upset.
We had, um, the city, we had the county commissioner there, we had the police chief there, we had the code enforcement officer there, we had the workforce representative there, uh, we had, um, someone from the American National Bank, and, and, whoops, we had, I think, um, the school. The school, the school, yeah. We had the school come talk about the farm election. So that was a really good, um, way to get things across to people. And I really enjoyed that. Okay, um, so what do we want to do about the next one?
Say we go ahead and set a date so that we can start getting flyers out and getting around it.
Do you have a calendar?
I do have a calendar. What do you say, four months or what?
Two, three.
June or July?
Just July. Can you hear us?
There's Saturday, the, or well, we did it on a weekday this time. Do you think it would get more attendance on a weekend, or was the weekday okay?
That seemed to be a good time, didn't it?
Yeah, it did. It seemed to be that Thursday was a good time because people got off work, came to the thing, and we didn't disturb their weekend. It seemed like, right?
And I also had another suggestion. This poor gentleman gets used quite a bit. So I thought maybe instead of just saying, hey, we're gonna do it there, maybe we should get a little bit of something, like renting the area for the night. Just because, I don't care who it is, you know, he, he does everything for every, all of us. The city, the EDC, the fire department, everybody. So, suggestion.
Sure, I agree.
So Thursday nights, we have six, thirteen, twenty, and twenty-seven.
Well, first of all, unless you ask James, if you might be available, but let us rent.
They don't want to, you know, just come and do it again.
But we feel like we need to pay you something.
No, you don't need to pay me anything.
We offer.
What's a good day for you?
I have to see my calendar too. I don't think we have anything. This is July, right?
Yeah, this is July.
The first week, we got some tournaments, and after that we don't have anything.
Okay.
So pick a, pick a Thursday.
Okay, so like thirteen, twenty, or twenty-seven?
The twenty, no, wait a minute, I can't, I'm twenty. That's the third Thursday, and the third Thursday is a county meeting, I hope you. So the second Thursday would be better for me.
The thirteen?
I like the thirteen.
We like thirteen? Yeah, not Friday, the thirteen, Thursday. Okay, so we'll do, there you go. Thursday, July thirteenth.
Okay, are we going to do like we did last time, everyone chip in and bring the refreshments?
Sure, if it worked out, okay.
It worked out well.
Well, it did. So we need a motion for this.
Okay, we do need a motion for this. Set it up for that date.
Make a motion, we do a business meet and greet with the business, local businesses, on Thursday, July thirteenth.
Are you checking?
All in favor?
Same time, right? Five to seven?
Yes, five to seven seems to work fine. And I guess we need a motion on bringing, us paying for that, us doing the refreshments again.
We need a motion for that.
Okay, so.
Okay, now make a motion, we contribute and make refreshments for the meet and greet night on Thursday, July thirteenth at seven o'clock.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All in favor. I have to tell you, I, you know, I bought the, uh, the plates and napkins and all that, you know, for the stuff. We didn't use half of them. Some of my grandkids were here this weekend, I used them all. I did not deduct any for those, those things. It came out of my pocket, I used them at my house. Okay, alright, so, um, Movies in the Park is our next, uh, business. And Harry is not here yet. I had a question about the projector.
Yes.
Does it take DVD, disc, does it have a thing in it?
It does not. What it is, is you can either hook up the laptop or, uh, the computer, or you can use USB, or it can go straight from like a TV type, anything that can go output input with video cables. But, um, I used, just for the testing of it, I just used a USB and it was great. And it was not, you know, expensive little thing, so.
So when we get ready to do this, um, we can take the DVD, put it in a computer or something, and then?
Right, well, um, most of the time you can download the movies, purchase them online and download it that way so that you're not, you know, going with copyright laws and stuff like that. You don't want to be dubbin' stuff off. But yeah, if you can download them off, from purchasing online, and just download it straight to the USB.
We need to pick a, a date that we want to start doing this also.
And that also cuts out the need for internet on that part of it. She wouldn't have to have anything to download it, if it was coming off of her computer or something.
Okay, you're saying hook the USB, but hook it to the computer?
No, no, the USB goes directly into the projector.
Oh, you're talking about a?
Yeah, a flash drive.
Yeah.
So we download from the internet to the flash drive, flash drive onto the projector, and the projector.
Goes to a screen.
Goes to a screen.
I'm sorry?
How do you get sound?
That's what we were working on. The last meeting we said, um, that potentially the fire department would have speakers. I'm sorry, who?
The chief.
Uh, yeah, would have speakers doing, knowing more about that. Did he say, okay?
I didn't ask him.
So do we need to look at, Harry said, other than that, we would need to purchase?
Uh, let's, if you would check with the chief until he's still willing to let us use his sound system. We need to start talking about what date we're shooting for, for this movie in the park.
How often are we gonna do that? And how often are we going to?
Yes, and how often are we gonna do that?
And who's gonna be controlling that computer projector presentation?
I can help with that part. So it was pretty simple.
And I also have a sound system if y'all need it.
Do you? Yes.
Awesome.
More than you need.
Thank you.
Yep.
So.
So then we're just looking, um, how would they, how do they connect? Would we need the, the mixer?
Well, I have all that.
You do that.
But how you connect that to the, uh?
That's my other thing.
I need to look at the projector.
Yeah, it has the aux, it has aux.
Does it have aux?
Yeah, it does.
Oh, if I brought it.
Okay. I've been trying to get that thing back up here, but they keep telling me, no, just hold on to it.
Yeah, everybody's scared to touch it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So am I, it's in a closet.
Some people are gonna sit on the ground. Okay.
Yeah, they usually just bring blankets.
Bring blankets, sit on the ground.
We had talked about.
Sell popcorn, sell drinks or anything like that.
There's money in it, if I'm not mistaken.
I think it would be a grand, yeah. Okay, so let's get to the next one. First of all, what day do we want to start this?
Are we looking June or July? Or what, what month are y'all thinking? I heard June one time, and then I thought, I heard July.
How about the time?
Dark thirty.
Dark thirty, yeah. Dark thirty.
Right, for a town with the most clear picture, you would need it to be pretty.
Yeah, we'll, we'll tell them dark thirty.
Just like, uh, just like the drive-in.
Just like the drive-in. But are we, you know, I'm thinking that June is pretty, um, pretty quick, pretty quick coming out. I'm thinking we probably need to get July.
Okay.
I guess the dark, so late in, in July, you know, like nine o'clock.
Yeah, they do it in Emory and stuff at that time, and they have quite a turnout.
Okay, so, um, share our entire motion.
Okay, well, the first week in July is busy with July court stuff.
Right, absolutely.
And the second weekend in July, we're doing our meet and greet.
Yes.
So more like the third weekend in July, you're not gonna be here, or you're in some other meeting thing.
The third Thursday, that Thursday, yeah.
And so we're gonna do it Friday or Saturday night.
I'd say Saturday night.
I think so too. Okay, so the third Thursday of July, the third Saturday of July, yes, Saturday.
That'd be the fifteenth.
Okay.
Is that the second or the third?
That's the third. The first is on a Saturday.
So Debbie said the fifteenth is that third Saturday, so I'm like, motion, we, we, we plan to do our first movie night on the third Saturday in July, which is the fifteenth.
Okay, I make, I second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
You'll come, right?
Yeah, date night.
Date night.
So you're gonna have a date night, just for kids?
You don't have to have kids.
So you'll come to the fire department. Um, the second thing that I think, so we've got a date, and we've got a time, it's dark thirty.
Movie.
Uh, for the movie. Um, the next thing we're gonna need to discuss is movie. What movie do we want to play? Do we have any suggestions?
I don't even watch TV, so I have no idea what's going on.
We have, we have like, uh, Gene Ockery.
Well, that's the senior citizen day. Which I do resemble, but.
So there's a few movies on pure flex that are really great, that we actually have at movie night in our church. And, um, I could see about purchasing one of those, so they're family friendly.
I like that, I like that idea.
So I'll see which ones I can get access to purchase, since we have to purchase it.
Right.
And get it on the flash drive and see, and I'll, I'll see about getting a couple of them, and then we can discuss them and see which night we want to play which one. Is that okay?
I mean, if anybody else already has it purchased, then you can, they can transfer it to you.
If who already has it?
Anybody.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't necessarily have to be the ones to purchase it, but yeah.
Yes.
As long as it's been purchased.
Exactly, okay, very good.
Excellent, okay.
Very good.
Very good, we like that idea. Okay, so this is gonna be that.
Should we, um, state, you know, like, it's gonna be all under PG thirteen?
Family friendly.
Family friendly.
Family friendly is the very good one to do that. Here's Harry, he's here. Drumroll. Alright, so, uh, we'll be just kind of bringing up speed real quick. Uh, we, so as long as you've been gone, we agreed to give, um, to our Jam Fest, we're giving a $5,000 sponsorship. We've agreed that, um, we're going to do another meet and greet on Saturday, on Thursday, the thirteenth of July, from five to seven.
They agreed with, uh?
Businesses.
Businesses.
Yes.
Another meet and greet, yeah.
We should tend to get most people to come out for that one. The, the, well, I can't really talk about it right now, I guess.
And we've agreed that we're going to start our Movies in the Park on Saturday, the fifteenth of July.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we're doing food again, at the meet and greet.
Oh, yeah.
Everything that we did last time.
We'll, we'll go into more detail next time. Okay, um, oh, Kathy, on that Movies in the Park, would you check and see if the fire department wants to do the drinks and popcorn? Um, as a fundraiser for that. Anything else we need to discuss about Movies in the Park?
Okay, we're not charging to get in, correct?
No.
Are there's gonna be drop off, or parents have to stay?
I think it'd be safer if we ask parents to stay with the kids.
Or at least to have a certain age that.
Yeah.
Where a company's on it.
I would say.
Sometimes, you know, if they're like eleven years old, and then they have like a sixteen-year-old sister or brother, then usually they allow them to.
Yeah, I could see that, yeah.
Have you guys decided on what movie?
Family friendly.
Family friendly. Elizabeth.
That's actually narrow the selection, yeah.
Well, Elizabeth's church has some movies that they have purchased in the past that we may be able to use. And so she's going to check into that for us and come back with some for us to choose from. So I think that's great, family friendly, okay. Um, anything else that we need to discuss with Movies in the Park?
Did we make a motion on the day?
We did, we did the day, we did the day, yeah.
Um, any snacking for that event or something?
We're asking the fire department to, uh, see if they want to sell popcorn and drinks and.
Candy canes or whatever.
Candy, whatever. Do y'all have one?
Candy canes will be good.
Snow cones too.
Yeah, I guess we could ask, the high school, they wanted to do snow cones. There's a snow cone thing.
It's gonna be hot anyway.
Do we have?
Sisters.
The boosters, the high school boosters.
Do they have a snow cone thing?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't ask for boosters.
Yeah, if you want to get in touch with them too, since you have your contact. Thank you.
We have a date and a plan, and we have refreshments.
Yes, we're good, we're good with thinking.
Okay. So I think we're, we can move on to the next part. Okay, our property that we bought at thirteen hundred, um, we're probably two seventy-six. Um, we're probably two seventy-six. Front park. We definitely have to get that place cleaned up. So the first thing we're gonna talk about is, I've got bids in your packets for mowing. I think we gotta mow. Yeah, we gotta mow. So the first one, first bid, uh, that's on your packet is from Courtney Hawk. He, he does all the, uh, mowing for India Hoops. HOA and does the work it out there.
Does he have the license?
Um. Yeah, he does. He does. Um, his one here, the, is, uh, C G C. C G C on there.
It's four inches.
Yeah. Um, so. If I look at that. He's asking for two hundred and fifty dollars for the first mow because of the condition it's in and a hundred and fifty each mow afterwards. And what we've asked for them to do is do the initial mowing. And then to, during the growing season, every two weeks to go out there and mow again.
It's gonna be three hundred a month during that time?
Yeah. And typically, I'm doing the HOAs and then typically, you know, there's like four months of. Of mowing and then there's like. Not, you know, after that.
How much, what's the area that we're moving? The acreage of the.
How big is this property?
Two point five six, I think is what they said.
Three and a half acres.
I think so, that's where you've gone.
Is it?
I don't think it's that much, maybe. I can't remember how much it is now, I'm getting confused with our, your property. Um.
I thought it was un, under an acre.
No, it's more than an acre. It's more than an acre.
Seems to be.
It goes from the amlets, the fence that's next to the amlets, all the way over to the driveway to the park. It goes back, it doesn't, it's not very deep, but it goes back to the entrance to the park and then straight across. So that's the first bid we've got. The second bid we've got is from We Mow It. And they. They said that they would mow for a hundred and twenty-five dollars initial. With ninety, uh, ninety dollars each time they mow after that. And then the final one was Captain Evan Fire Department. He does some mowing and I don't know if he's insured. Don't have any idea. He did not tell me that. He just sent me an email to tell me. What, what he would do it for. And he said that he would, um, mow at least first time for a hundred and twenty. And then afterwards, he would charge us eighty dollars every two weeks during the growing season.
That changed, that changed very reasonably, that changed reasonably. Yeah. Uh, what do you think?
I think so.
Huh?
I made John's with one hundred.
He's a reliable guy, right?
He is.
And we know where it works.
We know where to find it.
Oh, yeah.
Do we know how, like, what kind of a contract term we wanted to make with them?
I know. I was the one getting the We Mow It one. Uh, this company actually service the two-mile storage next to me. And he also service my property too. Um, they are bonded, they are secure, so they, they have everything that their business is in place. And, uh, one of the service that he also offers is they do not only. Mow the property, they pick up the trash too.
Yeah, I was looking at that, that.
That is something to consider.
I know, I know Courtney Hawk does pick up trash too, 'cause that's what he does at the HOA also.
And then, uh, when it's needed, they will also, uh, spray the weeds and stuff like that. So we can get rid of it, so. Things to consider.
My only suggestion is just do not let them put that rye grass down, because then they won't be every two weeks, they'll be every other day.
Yeah, we don't want to put any grass down.
Yeah, I still just sprayed my whole yard with it, pretty good, twice.
Beautiful style.
It's beautiful, but I'm every two days, it's like, it's tall. Okay, so.
Okay, so we'll go through those bids and then we'll share our entertaining motion.
It does say on that, uh, We Mow It, if the grass is over twelve inches, that they'll adjust the price for additional time.
That means, uh, if we waited longer than every two weeks or so, the initial mowing is one twenty-five.
Right.
And then the recurring one, every two weeks is ninety dollars.
That's not bad.
It's not bad.
These are our fire department guys and is he bonded, is he, we don't have insurance or anything like that?
We'd have to check.
The fire department guy is down by just ten dollars.
Yeah.
This guy will bring two to three people out of the house to pay the price. Last time mowing is, it says one seventy-two weeks? Or is it just?
The re.
Yeah, every, every two weeks, and that, that's the recurring. So ninety dollars.
The recurring is every two.
For the service, yes.
Kathy's gonna have to call our fire department bid person to see if they have insurance and they're bonded.
Okay. I just think the first one is a little bit steep.
It's a little bit pricey.
For every two weeks, a hundred and fifty, that's.
I think we already said.
It's not that big of a, yeah.
So. You add.
And Chad does my whole five lots for less than that.
The second people, or the We Mow It, they have their own trailer, they bring two machines on the spot and two walkers.
Yeah.
So they have two.
Trailing.
Ride on, riding whatever mowing machines.
Yeah.
And then they have the whole entire equipment in the back of the trailer, so. It seems like their business is mowing.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah.
They dedicate to that.
Right. I had one other bid that her mower broke.
Oh.
She said she. It was one. Her mower broke. I had one other bid and her mower broke, and so she said she wouldn't be available to do it.
It's not her business.
I was trying, I was trying to get, you know, some people in our area.
Right, because we had agreed that if they didn't quite have their, you know, business in place, that we would have them if it was the right bid.
Well, in that case, maybe they wanna do the first mowing with the shaving. Or the old ones.
I did share and it was like this.
I did three acres with a push mower.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the grass wasn't obvious.
Every two seconds.
And he lives here.
Who, which one? Did we not talk to? Klein, is it Klein? The guy that goes around doing.
Yeah, Mikey, Mikey Klein.
Yeah, did we not talk to him?
I didn't, I didn't ask him. All the thing I asked him was about the building.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's all I, that's all I talked to him about. He's not interested, so.
He's not interested, okay. Cause that goes in.
I have a person for the building.
Okay.
To clean it out of.
Yeah, we can talk about that, since we're talking about the maintenance of the property.
Let's go ahead and do that whilst we're waiting on her to come back from the thing. What's the deal about, okay, so tell us about it.
About cleaning it?
Yeah.
Yeah, he, like, he'll, uh, clean it all up and just see what he can get, uh, from the three miles that we're to. With the different things that, that come out of it.
He doesn't want money?
No money, the only thing, he can't, he can't afford to pay the, the, uh, trash thing there. Roll out, roll out there.
As long as he would sign a waiver for, you know, if he got hurt or anything.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
No.
So what we have to actually do is look at.
Police are concerned?
No.
Yeah.
Probably twelve yarder.
It's not bonded or has any insurance. He said he just does it on the side of Max McManus.
Oh, so it's not an official business?
No.
Was he trying to get there?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so I make motion, we take We Mow It.
I check into that moment.
Okay. I want to take it.
Let them mow.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 I love mowers.
Okay, good. Let me drop that one.
When are they starting?
I'm going to call them first thing in the morning.
Okay. So we can't get some. Do we have to wait or can they just do that?
We can just do that, right? We can just do that.
Yeah.
We can just do that, it's part of our, of the, so.
I can text him then, I'm asking, how can you start on that?
Let's go right ahead.
That way we can.
That sounds good. Okay, so before, before we have the guy who can clean it out, will you go and say there's been a black cloud that you spoke about?
Thank you for coming, now you're fine. Thank you so much for everything, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care, hon.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so we, we need to do that.
Yes.
Before it gets, and he says more. Yeah, exactly. I'm afraid he's, he may already charged us a little bit more, cause I mean, it's about twelve, twelve inches. But we, we have to do what we have to do.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, uh, bathrooms? Bathrooms in the park. Yes. Do you start?
Can they start?
Okay, are you telling me about the bathrooms in the park? We have, um. We've ordered all the parts.
Okay.
Uh, there is up this morning, only one part hasn't come in yet and he's expecting it tomorrow. He says as soon as he gets the parts, he's busy until Thursday, but he feels like he can come Thursday and start working on the bathroom. And feels like he could have it done in a day and a half.
This Thursday?
This Thursday.
My goodness.
So we are praying that that part comes in and that we get it done. So that's where we're at with bathrooms.
So that we can.
Good news, good news.
Sets it on a weight.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, we're, we're really praying that that part comes in and we get it all done this week.
Sorry, I just got that, we got the parts for the restrooms?
For the restrooms, all but one part came in today and the other part is supposed to be in tomorrow.
Okay.
That's what I talked to him today. And, um, then he said he has jobs until Thursday and then he would start on it on Thursday if that part comes in.
So that means that we are going to probably have the restrooms ready for the parks and, uh, market. I don't even know how to call that a bid anymore.
Market on the lake.
Market on the lake, yeah. Market on the lake should have bathrooms.
Or first market, market of the lake.
Market on the lake should. Market on the lake should have bathrooms.
Just go to the lake.
As long as, as long as you bring your pina coladas, I'll be there. I'll be there.
Okay.
I'll be there.
Well, this Thursday is six.
This Thursday is the fourth.
This Thursday should be.
Oh, I meant to.
Yeah, it should be the fourth.
And then so we're expecting them to be done by the eighth?
Okay, he says it should take a day and a half.
Who's going to?
So the market will be this, uh.
Did we already order him with somebody? Who's gonna sign off for whatever job when the job is completed?
It will be between me and my staff.
Keep an eye open on it, yeah.
Okay.
I am. And we are going from electronic to all man.
Okay.
So that we don't have any problems.
Yeah, no digital.
Yeah, so that we don't have the electrical problems that we had in the past.
Right, that makes sense.
That freeze up and have to replace every two minutes.
After we get the functioning of the facilities, are they willing to give bids for the rest of it?
Um.
Structure.
The structure will, uh, I was gonna see how they did. Use the job and then after that, we can.
Buy faces.
I think we'll be happy. All the other facilities I've seen that they've done.
I think we will be happy with it too, but, yeah. I, I mentioned it, but I did not put it down.
Cause that's why we went with him, right, because he's the general contractor.
Now, this, the guy I'm dealing with right now is just plumbing.
Right.
But the other guy that we were dealing with is our work.
It's the contractor and he's got the subcontractor.
Yeah, gotcha.
General contractor.
Yeah, and this guy's been doing it for like twenty-three years.
And the general contractor is the one that they do the workover framework, right?
Yes.
Okay, same work ethic.
Quinlan and Green.
And I really like this guy, this plumber.
Yeah.
Really, really do, because. I went in and I told him exactly, you know, why we were having frustrations with, with there and he was very quick to. To give me suggestions on how to do this better and, uh, how to move away from all those sensors.
Yeah.
Things which.
Red for fit.
So we're still at, what, we were at for the bid, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and it may be even less.
Well, that'd be great.
That would be, he says it may be less, so I would love.
Okay. Awesome.
Okay, um.
So I need to go back to the property?
Um, the five-year plan, the five-year plan is the next thing on there. I didn't put a new packet, I was in your packet last time that we looked at it. I just need approval for us to go ahead and submit this to the city council.
Right, um, I just had more or two pages to add for it. Just cause I've been promising you all these other working parts and I haven't gotten to you yet. There, I cut it down to twenty-six pages from twenty-eight. That's it. That's it. And I'll even say twenty-five, because I didn't put that big blue page on front of this.
Two pages, yeah, we just saved up three.
So I'm just actually going over the, uh, I'll just go over what I added in there.
Okay.
And then this goes on to, it can go on to the city council for approval. So it's just basically the summary. So where did I put it? I said I had it, it's here. Okay. So we got over all the goals and everything, so just in summary, the West Waukene Economic Development Corporation is a nonprofit organization. It was organized under Article fifty-one ninety point six Texas Civil Statutes as amended by the Development Corporation Act of nineteen seventy-nine and two thousand and seven governed by Section four B of the Act. Our analysis revealed that there was need for awareness of the economic potential in West Waukene and in the need for citizens to know we are committed to making West Waukene a place to live, play, or visit along the way. Over the five, next five years, the West Waukene Economic Development Corporation's plan is to revitalize and enhance the quality of life in West Waukene through the provisions of products, services that promote sustainability and develop economic opportunities. We'll start with the support of our current businesses and the meet and greet that's already taking place. And we'll also seek to collaborate with stakeholders in the area and build relationships with local, state, and federal government agencies to ensure that the needs of the city are met. We'll reach out to target audiences through the comprehensive marketing campaign, which will include a combination of traditional, digital, and social media marketing. The strategy will include the development of partnerships with industry leaders, hosting public events, and launching online knowledge bases for access to all. In conclusion, the West Waukene Economic Development Corporation is committed to providing the resources, services, and support necessary to revitalize West Waukene and to ensure its continued success in the future. We look forward to the joint effort with the city and its stakeholders to create a sustainable future for generations to come.
That's it.
Good, I agree.
I think that covers everything.
A little bit. I really thank you all for all your input to this, you know, and.
Wow.
Yeah, cause I couldn't have got all that stuff.
Allison, you've done a great job. So I make a motion, we approve of our five-year plan as Allison was presenting.
Oh, we just need to stick to the plan.
Do I have a second?
They have it, we have a plan for the plan.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Okay, so all in favor?
All in.
Okay, so I will ask for that to be on the next seat, council. Okay, so I will ask for that to be on the next city council agenda that we approve.
And I'm gonna have them all pretty little packets with their own little stuff, yeah. Make it all professional so they can't turn it down.
Daddy, when, when is that, uh?
It'll be.
You talk about next week?
Next week.
Okay.
At city council, we, we want them to approve it.
Yeah, cause I wanna hear. You, you gonna read that?
I'm gonna go through the whole thing. They're gonna have to suffer for that, yeah.
No, what we're gonna do is we're gonna put it in a packet for them to look at it before the meeting.
Right.
Right.
We do it, but I think we have some really good ideas here. We, we have some excellent ideas about how to address some of the needs here and would we follow our plan?
Yes.
We should really get some good results.
We've already gotten three of the, our little notches for this year already down, so.
Yes, we have.
Now we'll include the parts that we've already accomplished, so that we can find out where we're doing okay.
We're already looking at those goals and already.
I couldn't get the words out, so that's why you're the best.
We're already looking at those, we're already addressing the goals, we're already doing things that are on there, so. Okay, so, all right.
So what day is the council meeting?
It's Tuesday.
The ninth?
Yeah.
I'll make sure I get them all.
Um, okay, so I guess we'll go on to new business. Um, Lakeside Tax Service is not here.
What is that?
Uh, they wanted, uh, and they, she said she'd have to come next, uh, next time for talking about a facade grant for Lakeside Tax Service.
Where they located it?
They are right beside the park, right next door.
Oh, no, a little bit of building on the left side.
Your little house.
Dress it up so I watch it now. Okay, so let's go on to the free to low price websites.
Okay. So, um, during the process of the, uh, getting the advertisement on to the Liberty Marketing Plan or Marketing Map, it was brought to my attention that the website is not only just not updated, it is not functional. And, um, for one, that it was purchased, so we should have access to that. If it's the situation where she was hosting, then that's completely understandable because then we would still have to pay for her to host. Um, I have gone about starting a website, making it available. Um, you can do that free, charge through Wix. It's a very easy platform. You just click and drag. Also, if you wanted to make it, um, with its own URL, and if she is not having that URL, then we can ask her, well, I mean, it's our URL. We purchased the URL, so we can actually use that URL on to it and it can go to the same pages. If we did that, I think that it's, um, forty dollars a month. But they do everything as far as the hosting. Uh, you would just have to do forty dollars a month.
For the hosting?
Yeah.
Rather than the, the amount we were paying.
Thirteen hundred every month.
Every month?
She paid it down.
Forty dollars a month.
No, thirteen hundred.
Um, that was thirteen hundred was every two or three?
Uh, it was, it was every quarter.
Yeah.
Every three months.
Every three.
Have you checked, uh, GoDaddy?
Um, I mean, we can get her on and you can actually go through GoDaddy and get it for like a penny for the first year.
No, if you own, if we already own the URL, we don't need to do that.
Right.
What we need to grab from them is the hosting.
Right, I just need to know if she was hosting it actually, because then we would just have to convert it from her host into the, um, Wix, which is not, not hard. You can just transfer it over pretty easily. If it was something like, if she had it through GoDaddy or something like that, it goes easy too.
She hosting is not that she's actually hosting it. She's just maintaining the updated information. There's two companies that they do hosting. One is Starlink and the other one is gonna be GoDaddy. So for hosting.
You can do backend hosting yourself.
Yes, but, but you call yourself like you're hosting, but technically it's another company who's having your www dot alive. You're just updating the information. That's it.
Well, unless you're going deeper than that.
Well.
I don't know that she does. We just need to find out.
If you create a website with Wix or whatever it is, then you may need to have a separate company to host that, and that's okay.
So here, here's what I think. Allison, if I give you Danny's information.
I have tried to contact her a couple of times. I haven't gotten a response, but I don't know if it's maybe I'm going into her spam folders or.
I'd like you to try it. Since you know what we're needing here. I, I would like you to talk to her.
Okay.
Um, and I don't want, I don't want the website she had, any part of the website she had.
And I mean, I hate that we would change the name only because they did say there was quite, but, but she said there was like only a hundred and twenty-five hits. I think the last time she updated us, which I don't think that's enough to not make the name more related to the economic development.
Then we have right.
Visit Lake, visit Lake Tawakene.
Visit Lake Tawakene is what she put together and, and, yeah, and it was just not, it was not anything about West Waukene.
It's gotta be a catchy and a short name so people will remember that.
Right.
In a blink.
Right. So I didn't wanna just go ahead and create a, a name without, you know, but I didn't think that that name was actually.
And we are in that tone board and that over.
Can we take what she's built and who altered it?
I could. If she's done it on WordPress or Wix or whatever she's done it on, I can do.
She did on it. We just don't want to pay her going forward.
Right, I mean, if she was just doing the, yeah, that's what I'm saying. If we can get the login information, then we can go in and do all that ourselves, which we should have that because we purchased.
I think what I'm gonna do is I, I will contact her.
Okay.
And ask her to contact you. And that way we can see what we can do.
She bought it for us or we did buy it and we gave it to her.
Yeah, from what I understand, this is way before all of us.
Okay.
Wrong here is that we, uh, now, we hired her to develop a website for us and to maintain that website.
Okay. The website I'm paying for anyways. In the worst case scenario, if we think that www dot is not going to work for us and we cannot get in touch with her, then Plan B will be buy again, buy another www dot or because we are an org.
Right. And you can go through the GoDaddy for maybe the first.
There, you know, you can go GoDaddy or you can go, uh, Google domains too. And, uh, buy it and then buy a template from GoDaddy and then you just drop the content on top of the template.
Wix is a hosting site.
Yeah, Wix does the hosting.
Is definitely a hosting site. I mean, also I use them.
Yeah.
And it's one of the best ones because it's easy to do. Any of y'all can change stuff up there. You just need to learn. I mean, if you can do drop, drag and drop, you're there.
Do it, yeah. It's very easy. And I already have it like.
Yeah. Once we get this straightened out, I want us to, uh, highlight a business each month.
Right.
You know.
Yes, definitely.
Get it on this, so that.
The business.
So visit Lake Tawakene, that's a little name if we can get that.
Well, I mean, but it doesn't tie back to the EDC.
No, we need something that says it's economic development. Why? Bring your business to the lake.
Right, which is.
Yeah, but we need, we need, we need a that, we need, we need a catchy.
How about EDC? S E E, like you said, so. EDC. Actually sounds pretty good if you think about it.
That's cute.
It's catchy.
That's cute.
It is.
So that's something to think about.
Short too.
Yes.
Lake Tawakene, E D S E C.
Yeah, we wanna make sure we don't just say Lake Tawakene anytime we want to say.
West Tawakene Economic Development.
Yeah, EDC.
Yes.
I like that. Then have a logo with the eye and then an, uh, with the lake and then an eye on top of it.
I see.
I was thinking more of see what y'all are doing. See what y'all are.
Oh, yeah, we're doing, we're doing. Okay, so, uh, I will get a hold of Danny and ask her to get ahold of you so that we can get this going. Okay, um, we need to adjourn in second to the session. And I'm going to ask, um, that Sylvia come back with us for a few minutes?
Okay. She's probably gone a lot. Yeah, we're not.
So if, if that's okay, we're going to, uh, adjourn the executive session at seven fifty-two.
How about y'all stay here by the way?
Are you going?
Come down.
Wow, that's hard.
Hey, hey, you say you don't get that down.
Sound system.
Yep, that's true. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Take care, Bill.
During our meeting.
Good night.